We'll wait for Ms. Owens to get up here. Come on, Ms. Owens.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular scheduled council meeting here at Radcliffe City Hall. It's being streamed live on Facebook and recorded by Hard County Television. If you'll please rise for an invocation and remain standing for a pledge.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for your abundant blessings. We're thankful for our mayor and our city council members. Father, we ask for your guidance and direction over this city and all the decisions that are made here tonight. Bless our service members here and abroad. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Brown?
Here.
Drosch?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Merle?
Here.
Owens?
Here.
Thompson?
All right, we have a quorum. Can we have consideration approval for minutes for January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular meeting and February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, special call meeting, February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and work session?
Second.
Motion seconded and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, well, welcome everyone to our council meeting, those watching at home. Got a little bit of an agenda today, but before we get started, we have a couple of information on discussion items. Wanted to first start off with one of the recognitions. Obviously, as you know, this month is a special month here in our community, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pike, sir, if you'll read that for me.
Mayor would be happy to. This is regarding James and Emma Warren. TGR one point six one eight photography. The golden ratio is one point six one eight. Perfect symmetry is defined by God, and things appealing to the eye have perfect symmetry. Every Christmas, Mr. and Mrs. Warren come and take photos of all the children with Santa Claus. They give each family a photo to take home and in display. They attend our special needs parties, senior activities, and other community events, taking photos at no cost for those in attendance. His wife said it best when she spoke in the January twenty-second Monday's Man article about Mr. Warren's excellence and professionalism when it comes to photography. They are both wonderful and caring citizens who give of themselves to make Radcliffe a better place.
So what, who are you going to take a picture of? We had Ashley, because we weren't going to tell them why they were coming today, obviously. And so to surprise them, we asked Ashley called them and said that we had some special, some special guests coming, and they need to take some photos for us. So we wanted to recognize you all, obviously, for your achievements and everything you do for our community. Jerry, anybody got anything they want to add?
No, sir.
Yep, anybody?
I do.
Yep.
When I first started my IT career, he was my instructor for A-plus class, the very first instructor I had for IT, and I went through a whole career after that and retired from it.
Awesome, yeah. Well, every time we have a city event or, I mean, I think we met when I was campaigning, I mean, how many, it's, if I've been almost twenty years ago, I guess. And, but, I, I mean, you've taken so many pictures. How many pictures you think you've taken of our city events over the years? It just shows up sometimes and walks around and starts taking photos, and so we appreciate everything you do. And so if you want to join me in the council, over here, well, come on up here. Now, put your camera down. We'll let somebody else take a photo of this time. Yeah, come on up. Yeah, you can say it. Yeah, come on up. Go away to the, he's only getting his camera set up.
All right, three, two, one.
Take a couple more.
Straighten the thing. All right, I think we're good.
Oh, my gosh, today was crazy.
It's going to be crazy in the next couple of years.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Barbara, Ms. Owens. Thank you, surrender, appreciate it.
That's always nice to surprise. His look on his face was like, what?
Mr. Warren, we really don't have anybody here for you to take a photo of, so you're more welcome to leave now. All right, so we'll get started now with our other informational items. We wanted to give an update, as I said, last month, just due to some conflicting issues, but this month we have Mr. Fox to come up, and him and I will discuss a little bit about our current state and our fiscal year for two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, and kind of where we're at through our six-month projection. Obviously, seven, but we're a month behind.
Seven months.
Seven months.
My space will say.
Seven months. So, all right, so every year, we try to give you all a quick recap, and I just want to remember, or mention to you all that this is not a budgetary meeting where we're going to go through a lot of different line item stuff. It's more or less a recap of where we're currently at in our fiscal year. Obviously, if there's certain particular item questions that you want us to answer, we'll be more than happy to do that, or if you want to give me that, I can get that information back to you. But we just really want to give a recap at this time of kind of where we're at in the state of the city. So, Mr. Fox.
This is not really a, what I would call in-depth, but it's going, it's going, it's going to take a few minutes.
Everybody should have it.
I did not make copies.
Okay, sorry.
Normally, I don't, just because, because then what happens? Everyone's reading what they got instead of, but at some point, if we need to make copies, we can do that.
Yeah, we can. I'll give them a copy when I get them.
So, again, just to highlight what's transpired since you all approved the budget in June to where we're at today, and just trying to touch on mainly the items of note, projects, special purchases, things that we don't normally do. And then at the very end, just a brief revenue summary, because, of course, you know, our, what, the revenue we get is kind of what determines everything we're able to fund and move forward with. So I've just kind of done this on a departmental side, so I'm just going to name a department and kind of go from there. Police Department, and I'm always going to start off each one of these with a percentage on where they're at through seven months. So for Police Department, the basis, or the baseline is fifty-eight percent for seven months of the budget, and that's the same for everybody. Police Department's at fifty-eight point nine, so they're about point six percent over budget, which, again, if you've got a margin of two percent either way, you're pretty much where you need to be at this point. So Police Department's well within the range. Staffing-wise, they are almost at full strength, which has been not the case for a while. At the Police Department, as you all know, of course, we approved the new pay plan as a matter of retention and attraction this, for the current budget, so I'm sure that has helped. But they currently have three positions still to fill, one patrol officer and two detectives. One of those detectives is, of course, an action that you all approved recently, and some changes they made on the evidence custodian section. They implemented their MDT project as far as at least getting them purchased and installed. I'm not sure exactly where the chief is on actually utilizing them yet, because I think that's probably still.
They're in, yep, they're in vehicles and being operated yet.
Okay. So we had purchased, or allocated funds for thirty-three MDTs for the cruisers, and that project cost was about two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars with the associated expenses and, you know, the printers, the routers, things like that. So those have all been procured. The, they also had a replacement of their weapons, their hand, their handhelds and their rifles, and that project was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. I think all of those, or at least ninety-five percent of that, has already been purchased and are, I think, in the process, if they haven't already been assigned out to officers. I think the chief said they have one more, they have a final range, the first week or so of March, and then after that, we will get credit for the older models that we no longer will be utilizing with, with the vendor, Kiesler, and that'll come back to us as a credit offset, which was part of the budget. The station renovation project that we approved was about a four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar cost. We have been billed once to date by the contractor at a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. It's only the first draw. My guess is they have probably done more work than that, they just simply haven't billed us yet for what work they have done. So, you know, that's about thirty-five percent complete on, on that so far. Related to that, as you all may or may not know, we had, well, we still have an active insurance claim where the wall on the police station in the upper side, on the far side, has caved in from the rafters. That was from a high wind event back in April, and here we are ten months later, and we're still dealing with that claim. It's an unusual claim, it's not one we typically would get on something like that that has structural damage, especially from a side brick wall. Mike Pike's been aware of this, and obviously, as the mayor has, it's been a long process. We're hoping to get some final resolution very soon, because obviously, we, we feel it's a valid claim. There's been some kickback by the insurance company saying it was faulty construction as compared to high wind, and I think we're able to prove that that was not the case, so we just need them.
We've had our own independent, until we look at it. Structural engineer.
Yeah.
Forensic.
Forensic, after the fact, yeah. So we've had that done, we had to pay for that to basically validate what we felt was a justifiable claim. Don't know yet, obviously, what those costs would be. That project would have to be either bid out, or maybe as a matter of emergency, we're going to have to move forward with that, because it's been exposed now for ten months. I think we're trying to get some, or if we haven't already, trying to get that area tarped off on the top.
Yeah, one of the reasons, it's three stories up, and we're having an issue, and not to get into the weeds with it, but it's, there's some issue if we touch the wall, we're afraid it'll fall, which will cause, and the estimated cost could be over fifty upwards of a hundred thousand to repair, so that's why we're trying to get the insurance companies to do that. And it could come to the point where Mr. Pike and I, without, like I said, I don't want to get into the weeds with this, but where we may have to go ahead and do the work at this point, and then hope the insurance company, that dispute settles and we get reimbursed back for our costs, so.
And this is our former underwriter. As you all know, we, we transitioned to KLC in September, but this claim, you know, was prior to that, so we're dealing with an insurance company that we no longer have, which makes it a little more challenging, but it's still a valid claim, so just to give you an update on where we're at on that, in case, you know, it's been around for a while. Police cruisers, as you all may remember, or as you may know, I should say, very difficult getting cars these days, especially through state contract, getting police Tahos as we had budgeted last year. We had budgeted five, I'm sorry, six. One came in, which was a chief's car, the other five, which we budgeted last year, never came in, and those were ordered like August of two thousand and twenty-two. They finally came in in October of two thousand and twenty-three, so we've paid for those five cruisers. It's about three hundred and eight thousand dollars for those five cruisers, plus the associated equipment that goes with them. So there are still five more that would be what we budgeted this year. So all in all, you could have a total of nine cruisers come in in one fiscal year, but there's no guarantee that we're going to get those five cruisers by June thirtieth of this year, so we may be rolling over very similarly this year, like we did last year. So there's still about another three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars outstanding on those, on the balance of those cruisers. Admin Department, currently at fifty-seven percent spending, so about one point three percent under budget. The, there were two vehicles that were budgeted for fiscal year twenty-four. Both of those vehicles, for the mayor's office and also staff, have been, have been purchased and completed. The other item of note, obviously, as you all are aware, is a Redmar project. The associated expenses for that run through admin, both of those buildings, obviously, are down, as you all know. The cost to date, I felt like I should share, obviously, it's a tremendous amount of savings by the fact that we did not bid that project out to a contractor, so the amount of money that we have spent through the first seven months is a hundred and sixteen thousand, and that includes some contract work, as well as cost for dumpsters and landfill associated costs. Obviously, Stormwater Crew has done all of the work to tear those down with in-house labor and in-house equipment, which has obviously cost a tremendous amount of savings by us doing it that way. I think.
Now, the scrap, though.
And I, yeah, and there's, so to offset, that's just on the expense side, we have received, I don't have the exact figure, but I know it's more than twenty, but less than thirty thousand dollars in scrap metal revenue.
About twenty-five on the little buildings, about twenty-five.
There you go.
We've got another probably forty thousand coming, hopefully.
Yeah, because I think from building number two, which has the majority of the scrap compared to building one.
I'm always on Chance about this. It's like, I know what's coming in.
Yeah, so, anyway, so that's kind of the update on, on the cost as it runs through admin on the Redmar project. Fire Department, they're at fifty-nine and a half percent, so about one point two percent over budget. Staffing-wise, they were similar to the Police Department. They've hired quite a few firefighters since the beginning of the budget. I think they're now down to only one vacant remaining position that is currently being advertised, you know, to be filled, and I'm sure that decision will be coming soon by the chief. They're also seeking to replace their vacant administrative assistant to the chief, which is now, on a full-time basis, now been vacant for about a month and a half. It's currently been, the former person there is kind of working there on a part-time basis just to kind of help transition to the new person, and I think those, that application I saw that was out as well, and being advertised to fill that slot.
Yeah, and I want to go back one thing, just on the firefighters, the, and that and the police. I just want to, obviously, reassure the council, that decision that was made has really helped us get to the point where we are having good candidates that are applying for these positions. Prior to, and Chance, I don't know, Jamie's not able to be here today, but, I mean, we were down six firefighters at one time.
It may have been more than that.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, and we had the turnover ratio was just extraordinary, so to be down one
Can I interject?
Yeah, sure.
A comment, Mayor. I want to compliment Councilmember Toshi Merle for her, she worked so hard, and she was so fiercely strong to try to get these, the firemen and the policemen, get them raises and bring them up to where they need to be, with her experience and her longevity on the council. She really kind of spearheaded that and made us all aware of how much we needed that, so kudos to her for, for working that.
Yeah, we were glad, but it has made it attractive for, for people to come in, and so I just wanted to point that out, that that's, we went from being down six, seven firefighters down to being down one, and we're actually just looking for, we've got applications in, they're just going through the process, so.
And it's been easier on the Fire Department as well, because they now have a, kind of like the Police Department has for the Training Academy in Richmond, they now have one for the Fire Departments, which has only been around about a year, and so the Fire Department has been able to send these new guys to their state fire academy, which that, when they come out, you know, they're a certified firefighter, so the timing has helped them, because in the past, they would have to internally self-train them with staff. Well, a lot of those staff members that did the internal training either left or retired, so they were in a bad position that way, so it's kind of helped them having the new fire training academy to, to get those firefighters certified.
You have the fire engines.
Yes, sir. So, update on the two fire trucks. You know, one, we signed a contract in May of two thousand and twenty-two. That contract was one point three seven one million for that, for that replacement of a twenty-four-year-old model, I believe. It was a C-grade Quint two thousand model. That one is expected to be delivered somewhere around May and June of two thousand and twenty-four. So we're hoping before the end of the budget, it may roll over. If it does, we'll just reappropriate the funds, but it was about a two-year timeframe on that one. The other one, which would be replacing a, a nineteen ninety model Ford, so even older, so almost thirty-four years old. So that vehicle is the one that we just did this budget, that we budgeted eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for. That contract was, came in a little higher, it was one million forty-five thousand nine hundred, so about a hundred and seventy-one thousand over budget, so we'll have to address that at the appropriate time, but again, it's not now, because it's going to take, it's a two-year contract to get that one delivered. So you're looking at November of two thousand and twenty-five on that unit.
Yeah, and I just want to mention, too, Chance and I had this discussion regarding the fire trucks. If you remember during the time that we were discussing getting two fire trucks, we've never done that before, and I don't think, Chance, do you ever remember a time when we bought two fire trucks?
Never.
Almost in the same cycle. A neighboring community of ours had, unfortunately, an accident with one of theirs that they just received, and Mr. Pike probably only had a couple of months. It wasn't very long, a few months old.
Well, it's several months.
But they had wrecked that one, and the replacement cost for that one, after they ordered it, got it in, the replacement had went up four hundred thousand more than what they had purchased it for when they ordered it. So that just goes to show you how quick that, where most vehicles and most equipment depreciates, fire trucks just keep, the cost just keeps going up and up and up, so.
That truck was wrecked beyond repair?
Yeah, it was rolled, so, go ahead, Chance, sir. I just wanted to point out, that's why we had a, sometimes we had to take advantage of where we were at, the position we're in, to buy two fire trucks in a simultaneous.
So, yeah, I mean, between the two, obviously, you're talking well over two million dollars, so. The, the other item in the Fire Department was renovations to the station two, similarly as we're doing to station, or to the police station. That has not began yet for a couple of reasons. We budgeted a hundred and four thousand dollars for that, which we thought mainly had to do with some internal upgrades, but that, that amount of a hundred and four thousand will not cover the work that is needed both externally as well.
Are you talking about on the four hundred, yeah?
Uh, yeah, there's some issues with the roof causing, the roof is leaking at the Fire Department, so it may be a rebid.
I'm still going with Jamie, and we plan on going back out to contract because of the price that was approved and the price that it's going to take to redo it, it's going to be, it's not going to be the same, and I wouldn't want to do a change order that much to make that happen, and so based on what the, I don't want to put the number back out there, but the contractor was higher than what we anticipated.
So that'll come back for the council, because it'll be a bid.
So we're going to have to go back for the council, because a change order that large, I think, needs to be rebid.
So it's not, so in case for anyone wondering where we're at, kind of like, we haven't started that yet.
And Chief, Chief is obviously aware of it, and so he's, he sent a new updated list of things that need to be done, so we can rebid those, so we'll do that.
Parks and Recreation currently at fifty-five point eight percent spent, so two and a half percent under budget at this point. As you all know, staffing-wise, the department is reviewing current applications for a new Parks and Recreation Director, so that is ongoing. I think the mayor's office is handling that. The, once a director is hired, I think the next step would be that they would want to move forward to potentially fill the vacant programs coordinator position, which has been vacant for a little while, and I think the idea there was to allow, obviously, the new director and the new department head to be a process, to be a part of the process to hire that programs coordinator. The park, the pool floor, we budgeted a hundred and ten thousand dollars to refinish the pool floor after the last season. That was done, so that will be ready and a part of the pool opening for this year. That cost did come in a little higher, we budgeted a hundred and ten thousand, but it was a hundred and seventeen four, so again, I just mentioned that because some of these things may need some adjustments at the end of the year when we do a budget amendment. We budgeted forty thousand dollars for the replacement of some fencing and dugout at Dolly Park for the, one of the softball fields, and that, we just finished that, I guess, in the last week, because we made the final payment on that to the contractor. We have not yet done the paving of the gravel, of the gravel lot at Dolly Park. We budgeted estimated fifty-nine thousand for that. I'm assuming that's something that will be part of maybe the resurfacing of streets and such as we go into the springtime. There was one insurance claim from the same, it was either the, like, it was either the same wind event at the police station in April, we also had one in May, but we had storm damage, wind damage at the house on six fourteen Rogers Road, which I think they use as kind of a clubhouse, and the associated garage building behind there, and then one of the nearby park pavilions, oh, I'm sorry, park, the concession stand. So we had about thirty thousand dollars of contract work that was done to repair those three facilities. Obviously, insurance did pay for all that, less the deductible, so that will likely show up as some sort of a budget revision, at least to the, to, to the department, since it's going to show up as an, an unappropriate expense. I'll touch on this one, and the mayor, the mayor will probably want to add something to it, but the Call of the Center right now, heading into spring, it's got some air conditioning issues. You know, there's seven units out there that service that building, and they have internal air handlers, too. Well, two of those units that service up, the upstairs floor, the big room, the low room, are out, and they're going to need to be replaced. I think Tim Jeffries has gotten prices from vendors as quotes to kind of see where we need to be, but in considering what's going on there, there's also aged units that are thirty years older, thirty-plus years older that service the lower level, that, that probably, that still work, but if we're going to address the upstairs and getting more energy-efficient units, given the ones that are there now, it may be something that we might want to consider replacing some or all of those units.
Yeah, they, the main thing, if you all have any units at your own house, the, the freon system has changed over from what is there to what is today, so obviously, any kind of repair work or anything that has to be done is just astronomical. We lost the basement ones, because we had to put them, one, one of the basement ones, yep, so we have been kind of band-aiding it just to get us through. Now, it's at the point where obviously summer's around the corner, so one of the things I did have Tim do, because when he got me the initial quotes, so, and keep in mind, when we say quotes, quotes are something that comes in, somebody turns in a piece of paper and gives us sealed bids, and I'm just saying this not only for your recollection, but for the public's, when we say sealed bids, that means it's anything now that comes in over forty thousand, we have to have a sealed bid, companies can bid on it and then submit it, and we have a bid opening date. Anything we get quotes for is just giving us an estimate of what we anticipate it may cost and whether or not we need to go out to bid. And so in this case, when Tim showed me the current prices, I had asked him to go back and ask the companies to resize those units, because I believe when those units were big or put in back then, they probably wasn't as efficient as they are today, and so I think we're going to be able to size them down a little bit. I don't think we need a fifteen-ton unit in that small room, like it's currently showing, so I think we'll be able to get away with a little bit smaller units. So I did speak to Tim today about that, and then he's going to reach out to our, one of our local companies that did put a quote in and see if they'd be willing to resize those, and then if they come back at a lower price, which is And then if they come back at a lower price, which is under 30, or under 40,000, then we'll get the lowest bid and go with that. If it's over 40, then we'll obviously have to go back out for a sealed bid, so. And that's not budgeted items, but it's something that we have to have done, obviously, to have air.
And I don't know if that would be deemed an emergency expense or not. Only because of the timeframe it would take, I assume, to get something ordered, delivered in relation to the spring when the heat start, when it starts getting warmer in there. I mean, I don't know if that qualifies or not, but it's something to consider, I suppose. Public Works Department, they are at 52.5%, 5.5, or 5.8% under budget. The department here, we were talking about police and fire before as far as having some staffing shortages. Now that kind of transitions to public works. So the public works currently has four vacant positions in the department. And one of those positions includes the assistant department manager. He retired a few months ago. So four total positions that are vacant, kind of a big hit to the department because outside of the mechanic section, I think they're staffed at about 13. So those are actively, you know, trying to be filled and recruited for those positions. Hopefully, the recent change that the council has made upon recommendation to increase the non-hazardous wages across the board on all grades will, will be more attractive to that.
We did that in December, so.
Yeah, that was just done, what, six weeks ago or so? So, you know, we raised the minimum hourly from 1463 to 17. So hopefully, that's going to be attractive to get some people to, you know, fill those vacant slots. Because this is the time of year coming up for them where their activities really begins to ramp up when the spring comes. Street resurfacing. So the, we have budgeted 440,000 for streets. I think, and the mayor may have talked about this previously, but sometimes in the past, I think we've, we've done some resurfacing in the late fall. The majority was in the spring. I think the mayor has held off a little bit, maybe it's something to do, you know, with, with assaults, with assault on the streets over the winter time. But I think as soon as the plants open up soon, I think we're going to start seeing the resurfacing beginning. And to add to that, something we can consider later, municipal road aid funds are up quite a bit from what was budgeted, which is the 440,000. So it appears at this point, we're probably going to collect another 75,000 to 80,000 above that. So it could be something where, you know, maybe the mayor comes back to council and says, you know, we have some additional funds if we want to, you know, approve additional city streets to be resurfaced above and beyond what was budgeted. Planning and Building Department.
Quick question, sir. Do we have anything planned for sidewalks?
Uh, you know, we, we budgeted typically about 20,000 to 22,000 for sidewalks. Now that includes both sidewalk extensions to areas where there are none, and that includes maintenance of existing sidewalks. I think the majority of the work that the department does for sidewalks is typically in the spring and early summer. So I think so far, so to date, I don't think there's been much activity, although some. But I do think the majority of that tends to be in the spring and early summer.
Yeah, one example, Kim, is Lockston Parkway. We went from Crocus all the way down to Robin, where we replaced that, we put all the re-drain. I don't know if you saw that, it's where the sidewalk is, you probably drive down there and see it. That's like something we did last spring, so. And that used up most of the whole budget for that. So a lot of times you see, people don't see them always on the side road. Now, when you're talking about an actual extension, which, you know, one obviously is always on everybody's mind is Vine Street. You know, that's a whole project, and that's, that's upwards 250, 300,000, so.
Planning and Building Department, they are currently at 70.7%, so about 12.5% over budget. Now, that necessarily shouldn't be alarming. It is a big number, but there's reasons for that. The majority of that, a lot of that, has to do with, it's actually a positive, electrical inspections and building permits. So, you know, we budget the expense associated for electrical inspections because we, you know, have an electrical inspector that gets a percentage of those costs. But the bigger that number is, that means on the flip side, on the revenue side of what's collected for that, that goes up proportionally. So that's kind of what's happening. So we only, we had budgeted $20,000 for electrical inspections. Well, we've already spent almost 29,000 more than that, which is a big number. But on the revenue side, for the entire 12 months, we've budgeted $105,000 for building permits and electrical permits. Well, we've already met that in seven months. So we have five more months to add to what's going on in the economy, what's going on here, more construction, more building permits, more electrical inspections. So although there's an associated cost of that, the positive of that is there's, there's revenue on the other side to offset that.
But it's, it's because of the growth that's happening or the development's happening is driving that.
That's correct, yeah. The, and then the other item to note there is that, you know, you all approved for the first time another staffing position in the department for the current budget, a planner/technician position. And that position was finally filled in early December. I think they took a while to find that, to find the right person. It's a very unique position. It's not a position that a lot of people go into or have the background for, but we were able to find someone who transitioned to the community and has now been with the department for a couple of months. So moving forward, you all probably met him anyway at this point.
I think y'all met Chris already, he's been at a couple of our meetings.
And obviously, there's a lot going on in the planning department right now, as I, as I just mentioned regarding permitting. So having that extra staff person available is big, you know, given the volume in the department right now. Stormwater Department spent 48.9%, so 9.4% under budget. Staffing-wise, they're at full strength and have been for most of the budget. The Happy Valley Tunnel project, expense-wise, was the project that was run through this department. And as you all know, we had discussions about that not too long ago, that did not pursue that project because of the associated costs over time from where that project first began four years ago to delays, pandemic costs, plant closings from certified plants by the state. And that project cost, which started off at the $502,000 range, is now close to 1.2 million. And obviously, we have a commitment of 20% of that, which made our costs significantly higher than it was first shown and our commitment to it, so. But that, so there's, anyway, so that's running through the stormwater department, so you won't see any associated cost for that on construction.
Excuse me, Chance. So I had, because I had a note for, to ask you that. Is that that FEMA tunnel you're talking about that goes on the, so we are definitely taking that off the table? Is that what we all agreed on?
I think that's what it was, the agreed answer was, yeah.
Okay, I'm making sure, okay. We had conversations about redoing something else, but it's off the table, okay.
The other project, which has also been around for a while, but you're dealing with federal FEMA, and it takes a long time as well, that would be the North Lockston FEMA drainage project. That is still, I've had some communication with the person at the state who has communications with the folks down with FEMA. It's still a, we've done everything we're supposed to do. We've submitted everything we're supposed to do. We're just waiting on FEMA approval and subsequent to that, a contract approval to maybe begin the steps of that project. The department allocated, or council allocated, a replacement of one of their excavators. And that mini excavator has since been purchased. That cost was 61,300. We budgeted 55. It is a used unit, so it did come in a little higher than we budgeted for it. The department also allocated $75,000 for some drainage work and a retaining wall along an area of South Wilson Road. I don't have the specifics on where on South Wilson. But I know we said that we would use in lieu funds, which we can do. And I just talked to Jake Sanders, the superintendent there, and he said that is a project there that's on their radar, that they would still hope to do this budget. The other item was they budgeted $55,000 for, to put up a pale barn building with concrete floor. That has not started yet. That was mainly going to be used for having a controlled environment for their stormwater equipment to be stored indoors rather than outdoors. That has not started yet, but they expect to still be able to do that. And then the other note that I would make on them, and I think I already touched on it, is basically that the stormwater department and their crew and staff has been the one that's done almost all of the work down with the demo at Red Mar. So as an internal department, being able to use internal resources and equipment to do that. So on the revenue side, we've collected 66.8%, which is 8.5% over budget, which is a good thing as far as cash flow for the city to be able to do the things that we've talked about. The, almost all of our property tax revenue has already been received, which is typically the case. But we've, we've also collected and gone over anticipated some on our 2023 property tax revenue. The other two, fact, the other two main revenue sources for the general fund, the occupational payroll tax, in comparison to this year to last year, we are up about 160,000 in collected revenue this year than we were last year. And for insurance premium taxes, we are up 128,000 this year over last year. So the two combined, about $288,000 more this year than last year. Of course, a lot of that has to do with a growing economy. The higher that, no different in the private sector than we have to deal with in the public sector. We have to look, review, and adjust our wage scale. Well, similarly, that's going to be happening in the private sector. So as a byproduct, as more wages go up on a percentage basis, you know, the city collects more. And as property values have gone up, which they have, then the city as a byproduct gets more revenue from insurance premium fees. And then I was just going to mention road fund, or I guess I won't mention it because I already touched on it. We are expected to get approximately $80,000 more than we had allocated for that. And then the final point I'll make is investment income. I won't go into the specifics of dollar amounts, but obviously, it's a very favorable market right now. Pam may know a little bit about that. So interest rates are up, up significantly from where they've been in a long time. And as a byproduct of that, the city does have reserve funds that we have. We have some of those, you know, we have our COVID funds that have yet to be spent. So as a result of that, you know, we've done very well with investment income. And we do try to utilize, you know, more than one entity, which we do, to make sure that we're getting the best rate as we can on these public funds. I think that's all I got, Mayor.
All right. I don't want to get into a bunch of questions, obviously, because it's not a much, I would do, I want to make a comment, and then I'll ask anybody if they have a quick follow-up. But ultimately, I know a lot within the public eye. Of course, I've heard it just several times, but obviously, one of the main things that I've always said is, for the last several budget cycles, we've not had any debt. And so as you can see, based on what Mr. Fox just said, and our money and our income levels, are what we're generating are in, in good shape. One of the things I want, the reason I say that a lot is, in our private, you know, in the private sector, obviously, you, you do your best to save and spend and so on and so forth. Well, I have a buddy that may have a Ferrari. Doesn't necessarily mean I can afford a Ferrari because I have to do it based on my income, right? Well, a lot of times, we get compared to a lot of other cities, or we get compared to everything everybody else is doing. And so we live within our means. Well, obviously, in the business sector, and I'll just toast you, I'm just looking at you. You know, if, if you need to raise income due to it costs more to feed the dogs, your employees need, well, as a customer of yours, what do you do? You have to raise the fees, right? Well, guess who our customers are? Our customers are taxpayers. And so, you know, it's very easy in the private sector, you can say, hey, a cheeseburger used to cost $2, now it costs $5. Well, in government, we, we have to operate within our means, and I've always, of course, believed this. And so the only way that we can generate revenue is how? We have to grow. We have to build our economy. We have to make sure that we're getting jobs. We have to grow our economy that way. On the other side, if we live frivolously and we want to have the Ferrari, well, guess what we have to do? We have to raise taxes, right? And so sometimes, you know, when I see things or read things on Facebook, and I try not to respond to those things, people say, well, it keeps mentioning we're out of debt. Well, that, that ought to be a positive to you and your community because that means we're living within our means. We'd love to have the sports parks, we'd love to have everything, all the big youth centers, all the big, yeah. But to do that, what do we have to do? We have to raise taxes, we have to go into debt. And so we're doing everything we can. I think having a good, and I call them our money managers, but our department heads working alongside the number-one pencil sharpener in the city hall, which I call Chance, working. We got good people, we got good people managing our money. Ultimately, you know, I think we can do things, and we, we try to do what we can for our community. But I just want everybody to know that's watching, and I do want to mention real quick as a side note, Facebook keeps dropping, so Tim is recording this, and then he'll place this back on Facebook because, and hopefully, people to stay on that watch that know that we didn't cut it, cut it loose. It just, it, Facebook keeps dropping us. But they understand and realize that we're doing the best we can with our dollars. We're in a good place for the city. Chance, probably, I'd say probably one of the best we've been in in quite a while.
I'd say the last couple of years, yes.
Yeah, I mean, Chance was part of that group that lost a million bucks. I won't say lost, but there's a revenue side that came a million dollars short, and it was tough times.
Well, when I started, I remember we had, our resource was 250,000.
Yep.
In the general fund.
Yeah, so, that's my soapbox, that's all I wanted to say. But I just want, I just wanted to point out, you know, we're, we're in a good spot, we're in a good place. Yes, we'd all love to be driving Ferrari, but right now, we're driving our, our Chevys and our, our Fords, and we'll get there eventually, but let's just live within our means and operate within our means. And I think the taxpayers, hopefully, some of the taxpayers will appreciate that, so. Anybody got anything?
The only question I want to ask is, and maybe you're already working on that, but because we have to rebid the fire department, and this was a project from last year, but of course, with everything that's happened, are you going to go ahead and start getting bids now?
Yeah, we, we will, we'll put it out next month, first next month, to give people opportunity. And then as far as the COVID dollars that we were anticipating using for that, as long as you have a allocated fund towards that, you can still expend those.
Yeah, because I asked, there is a deadline for COVID, I think it's December of 2024.
Right.
But there's a difference between fully expended and allocated. And I asked the question, those funds have to be allocated, committed, but not yet spent is acceptable.
Yeah, so we should be okay with that.
I want to follow up on one of Kim's questions. He was asking about sidewalks. Do we do those in-house or do we bid those out?
In-house.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
The larger ones that we've done in the past, we've had contractors do it. And, but we haven't had a large sidewalk project. The last one I remember doing was on Lockston from, it was from Fairmont up to Lincoln Trail, the last big one I remember doing.
Well, we've done, it was over here by, in front of Branmer Telephone, you know, from South Wilson. Up, we've done, then we did a long, we also did a long.
Oh, yeah, we done, we did that one down.
And then we also did that section on Dixie in front of Hart's Body Shop, that whole section from, from the middle school.
No, I'm talking about within recent, since Jerry's been, yeah.
What about Hill Street? Is that, is that?
That's tough.
Okay.
That's a tough.
That, yeah, there's such a drop-off trying to walk along there.
That's a tough, that's a tough road to try to.
It is.
Yeah.
You know, I'm a big believer in sidewalks are very important. For some, it's a means of transportation. For others of us, it's walking, making sure we stay healthy. So I would love to see us try to, is, do we have anybody that does grant writing type of stuff where we could maybe get some kind of funding to really do a major overhaul on some of these?
So we have applied for several grants. That's, Murray, what's the sidewalk grant, the TP, the?
RTP.
RTP grant, trail grants. We also have done, Lincoln Trail Ad has one right now that we're looking at to try to apply for, to see if we got it. There's about 300,000 in it. So it just all depends on what we can, what we can get. There's, there's some national grants, but we've, you know, I've never, Murray, have you ever had any luck with those? Yeah. So we have had some sidewalk, the Dixie, the, all the light, from Lincoln Trail all the way up to the bridge, that was all a grant. So we've had, we've had past grants where we have had it, so that's, that's what I mean, like.
I'd like to see if we can continue, just keep reaching for those, you know? Because, I mean, it's, like I said, for some, it's a means of the way they get around.
Yeah, the one we have identified right now is Vine Street. Yeah, the one we have identified right now is Vine Street. Jake has laid out a topography of what it would look like, and, you know, there's some challenges with it, but.
On Vine, yeah, some of those areas.
It's from Vine up to Wilson.
Yeah.
Or from Loxton to Wilson. Yep. All right, Chance, thank you.
You say you're going to say COVID.
Yeah. You can leave it on, I got Ms. Baker coming up next.
Sure. I'll have a question.
All right, Ms. Baker, you have got some information about a moonwalk.
I do.
Coming up.
I will be much more fun than Chance was. And much shorter than what Chance was.
This is an interesting concept.
Give me a, yeah.
It'd be easy, you could borrow a microphone.
I figure you don't want to.
Yeah, I ain't got one of those yet.
I'll get one.
I'll get one.
I'll get one. Yeah, I'll get one extra, let me have it.
All righty, I appreciate you all allowing me to come and speak on behalf of the Radcliffe Forestry Board, and wanted to talk to you about this new event we have going on. It's the full moon hikes. Every month, there's a full moon. And some years, there's actually thirteen full moons. This year, we just have twelve. So you can see on our list, the days that they have, each full moon has its own lore that goes with that, and they all have different names and themes, is to speak of. We have all of those laid out on the sheet. There we have the times, and we will be meeting at Saunders Springs Nature Preserve, and we will take about a thirty, forty-minute hike from the Welcome Center on the Knox Trail and back up. So we're going to start a little bit before dark and end at dark, or after dark. So if you all have any questions or anything on that, I'd be glad to answer them. Right now, we have seventeen people that have already signed up. It is limited because it's in the dark and it's in the woods, so we've got to have a cap on it. So if anybody's really interested, it is a free event that we're going to put on. Do y'all have any questions?
Yeah, it's, just in case, I know with our lovely weather we have here, if it does rain, is there any cancellation notices they may need to?
Yeah, implement weather, implement weather, then it will be canceled.
Okay, so probably rain or snow?
Right.
Still?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we could still have that. And we're doing it all the way till December. January, I think we, I think it did rain that, that evening.
Obviously, having the moon out and the lit is the idea.
Yeah, cloudy's not going to be so good, but we can still, we can still do it in the cloudy day. But do y'all have any questions on anything on, as far as the moonwalk goes?
Distance of the wall and.
Oh, bring your own flashlights, yes, sir.
Right, but the distance and is what I'm looking for.
Topography?
What?
The topography.
No.
How long's a trail walk?
Well, how long is a trail walk with the difficulty?
It's a very easy trail. It's the Knox Trail. It's the, comes up by Wilson Road, it's that newer part that we got from Fort Knox and annexed, and it's all relatively flat. We wanted to make sure it was safe.
And there's no difficulty walks or anything like that, or me?
Right, it's all going to be easy, easy to do. We don't want to call fire department out because somebody tripped or fell down the ravine, so we're making it safe.
And maybe just an idea, I was sitting there thinking, Barbara, maybe each, and y'all may be already doing this, I don't know, are y'all given like a, something like a badge or something for everybody that makes each one of these, maybe, so they, they can collect?
We haven't yet, but.
Maybe like a moon coin at the end, or?
That's something that we can do if people continue to, to do those. The other thing is, we are going to have some little treats along the way, maybe. We're going to try to implement that, because as you read there, there's a lot of, lot of fun things that we can do with those things.
All right.
You can learn a little bit about the full moons.
So this Saturday, February twenty-four, six P M., Saunders Springs Nature Preserve, the moonwalk, if they want to find out more information, they can go to, call Calvin, two seven oh, three five one.
And you register for this at radcliffrecreation.com, register online, and this is being put together by the Forestry Board, Parks and Rec, and Kemba Lincoln Trails.
All right.
And I have one more thing.
Yes.
The other event we have going on is April thirteenth and April fourteenth, this is the endurance trail race that we did last year was the first year of this, and this is hosted by Kemba Lincoln Trails, that's Kentucky Mountain Bike Association, if you're not familiar. Radcliffe Forestry Board, Harden, Elizabeth Town Composite Mountain Bike Team, and the Mead County Composite Mountain Bike Team. We are going to be professional, well, professional timed by Central Kentucky Race Management. Our sponsors are Radcliffe Fort Knox Tourism and Convention Commission and Hart's Body Shop. Saturday, the thirteenth, is a six-hour endurance race with kids race, and we will have both five K and ten K runs. And then Sunday is the mountain bike race, it's a six-hour mountain bike race, there'll be solo category, duo, and four-person teams. And last year, we raised three thousand dollars, which was split four ways, and that gave each group seven hundred and fifty dollars that we raised for Saunders Springs, that we were able to help with the trails. So.
I love the idea of these moon hikes. Whose idea was that, Barbara? Is Bob Decker, or Vince Carman, or?
No, Vince saw that in another part of the state, and he said, you know, that's something that we could, that we could do.
Yeah, they keep coming up with great ideas for things to do out there.
Yeah, we want to get people in the park.
Yeah.
You know, there's no sense in having a park if people aren't in it, enjoying it. Right now is a wonderful time to go, take a little walk through the park, especially today, I was out there today, and you can see so much further than, you know, when it's all leafed out and everything, it's, it's very nice. Also, on a side note before I go, I want to thank you all again for, a couple of years ago, you all made your own donations for the daffodils, and they are all coming up again, so we should have another beautiful spring.
And you planted them, you and Glenn Hines planted them, didn't you?
Uh, no, the parks.
Parks guys did it.
Parks guys.
Who'd you plant?
That was the begonias in front of the sign.
Okay, I knew you did some.
Which we would love to do that again, if you all would like to make that donation later in the summer.
Ms. Barbara, well, thank you, because these Saunders Springs, there's so much activity that goes on in Radcliffe that, that people just don't know about. So coming here today and bringing this stuff and putting it out there is, I mean, this is just great. But is this posted on the Calvin page? Because you don't have a personal, a forestry page, right?
No, it's through Calvin Community Center and.
Everything that goes on.
There's this Saunders Springs page.
Oh, okay, do you post it there too?
I believe it is posted there right now.
As well, so that that way, there's more locations for people to see what is happening within the community, within Radcliffe in particular, and at Saunders Springs, because you're all doing a lot of different activities, so, thank you.
And the News Enterprise will probably have it.
And the News Enterprise, but you know, just so that, all the different places, it's posted, so the more places people can get the word.
And that's one reason that I wanted to come out to you all and make sure that you were aware.
We can share it.
If you need any more flyers, you can pick them up at the community center, print them out.
It's one of our busiest parks. It's one of our busiest parks.
Yes, it is.
You said it was limited to so many people, you said you had seventeen signed up, but how many is the capacity?
Right now, we have it at thirty.
Okay.
Because we have to make sure we have enough support staff to be at the beginning, in the middle, in the end of, of the group.
Okay.
Make sure it's, it's safe. Safety's first in any type of operation, especially when you're dealing with parks and that sort of things.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
All right, this time, we'll move on to public comments. Anybody have anything they want to add, bring up? No? Do you got a question, or you want to ask a question? Yeah, just have to come, you have to come up to the mic. Yeah, you, you gonna make you walk all the way up here. You just have to state your name.
Okay.
My name is Lenora Young, I'm a resident of Radcliffe, and this may be publicized, I just don't know. If you would like to get a streetlight on your street, how do you procure it?
If you will give us the streetlight area, Ashley can take that, we have to call the utility company, it's either Nolan or K U, depending on where you're at, and then we notify them, and then, then a week or so, they usually come out.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, is there one there already?
No, last week it was too dark.
Oh, you want one, you want one on your street, that's a difference. In a minute, Murray, see the young man back there who's smiling, turn around. If you'll let him know the address before I call him up, just give him the address. Murray, you got something to write with? Yeah. Yeah, and then we'll, we'll take a look at it and see.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, and my other question is, with sidewalks, thank you, keep on them, if you need them. It's very, I'm serious, because I almost hit a, out of South Wilson, dark, dark clothes, I almost hit a guy, scared me to death by the time I got to him to see him.
Yep.
However, who sets the priorities for which area is the first, second, third?
Is for sidewalks?
Yeah, sidewalks.
Sidewalks, most of, most of all the residential areas have sidewalks. Most of our main roads is the issue. So your Vine Street, never had, you know, there's bits and pieces of sidewalks through there, South Wilson Road's the same way, North Wilson, they're all those main, but all your residential areas usually are. So if there's a residential area where the sidewalk has to be repaired, or something like that, those are called in. A lot of times, those fall on the homeowner. And so, the way the ordinance, Mr. Pike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of the sidewalks belong to the property owners, and it's up to them to repair them in front of their own house. Now, there's, there's some variances in that, there's obviously things that we work with property owners, because obviously, conditions, something wasn't done correctly or something like that. Your main roads, which is your, your Vine Streets, your South Wilson Roads.
South Wilson, the Vine.
So Vine Street is a state road, but we, in the past, have helped to get sidewalks put in some of those areas. Rogersville Road, same way, fifteen hundred, those are all state-run roads, and that's why they don't have the sidewalks like some of the residential sides do.
Okay. Because my concern is that one that's on Vine Street that goes up that hill by that little store, and people just keep walking down.
That's the ones we're talking about, those are the ones that we have a plan right now. Last, late fall, let's see where we at, yeah, I guess it was mid, mid-August of last year, one of our superintendents did a layout of what that potentially could cost. Again, it just goes to funding and priority, so that's, that's what it is. But yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about, because everybody walks right on the edge, and you're driving down through.
You gotta get up that hill, but it's not, it's very dangerous.
And what's interesting is, State Stevens has a sidewalk from the gate all the way down to, so, but they'll walk right out in the road, they won't use sidewalk.
I've noticed that, students do it, walking dogs do it, but I, but we still need sidewalks.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I don't.
But yeah, if you'll give Murray, if you'll give Murray that address.
Stay on.
Yeah.
Mayor, Council, I'm sorry, but I have to excuse myself.
Yep, thank you. I thought we'd be done before six thirty.
Yeah, it's okay.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Mr. Pike, can we have a second reading of an ordinance, number one, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor, this is a summary of an ordinance annexing territory to the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky, located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Ernest Arkuma Boulevard and Patriot Parkway, Kentucky three sixty-one, Elizabeth Town, Kentucky. P V A number one six three zero 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 one two point zero seven, twelve point five two-two acres. The city of Radcliffe is granting a voluntary annexation request pursuant to K R S eighty-one eight point four twelve and eighty-one eight point four twenty, made by applicant B and M Development LLC. For the property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Ernest Arkuma Boulevard and Patriot Parkway, Kentucky three sixty-one, consisting of twelve point five two-two acres, and designated as Harden County P V A map ID number one six three zero 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 one two point zero seven. C D'd dated July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, D book fifteen thirty-eight, page ten seventy-two, Office of the Harden County Court Clerk. Please find the full ordinance on the website, W W W dot radcliffe dot O R G, or by contacting the city clerk at ashley dot Russo at radcliffe K Y dot G O V by email. That is a second reading, ready for motion to adopt, and roll call vote.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, but roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Brown?
Yes.
Deroch?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, Mr. Pike, next, a second reading of an ordinance.
This is a summary of a zoning ordinance rezoning property located at twelve seventy-six Hill Street, Radcliffe, Kentucky, portion of P V A map number one thirty-eight forty zero one zero eight eight, from residential four zone to residential six zone. The city of Radcliffe Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on a zone map amendment request on January fourth, two thousand twenty-four, made by applicant B and M Development LLC, for property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Ernest Arkuma Boulevard and Patriot Parkway, Kentucky three sixty-one, Mel's Acres subdivision, lot two D, P V A number one six three zero 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 one two point zero seven, from R one zone, Harden County to commercial zone. The city of Radcliffe Planning Commission recommended the zone map amendment request be granted as the request was supported by the evidence of record and the city's comprehensive plan, and the city council is now enacting an ordinance to change the property zoning. Please find the full ordinance on the website, W W W dot radcliffe dot O R G, or by contacting the city clerk at ashley dot Russo at radcliffe K Y dot G O V by email. That's a second reading, Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Merle?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Deroch?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Pike, number four, second reading of an ordinance.
This is a summary of a zoning ordinance rezoning property located at twelve seventy-eight Hill Street in Radcliffe, Kentucky, portion of P V A map one thirty-eight forty zero one zero thirty, from residential holding zone to residential six zone. The city of Radcliffe Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on a zone map amendment request on January fourth, two thousand twenty-four, made by applicant Eddie El Cato, for property located at twelve seventy-eight Hill Street, Radcliffe, Kentucky, consisting of one point three four acres, and designated as a portion of Harden County P V A map ID number one thirty-eight forty zero one zero eight eight. See will book sixty, page four eighty-six, and will book seventy-three, page two ninety-five, Office of the Harden County Court Clerk. The request was for a zone map amendment from residential four zone to residential six zone. The planning commission recommended the zone map amendment request be granted, as the request was supported by the evidence of record and the city's comprehensive plan, and the city council is now enacting an ordinance to change the property zoning. Please find the full ordinance on the website, W W W dot radcliffe dot O R G, or by contacting the city clerk at ashley dot Russo at radcliffe K Y dot G O V by email. The request was for a zone map amendment from Harden County R one residential zone to city of Radcliffe commercial zone. The planning commission recommended the zone map amendment request be granted as the request was supported by the evidence of record in the city's comprehensive plan, and the city council is now enacting an ordinance to change the property zoning. Please find the full ordinance on the website, W W W dot radcliffe dot O R G, or by contacting the city clerk at ashley dot Russo at radcliffe K Y dot G O V by email. That's a second reading, Mayor.
All right, can I have a motion to adopt? Motion to a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call vote, please.
Deroch?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, Mr. Pike, next, a second reading of an ordinance.
This is the summary of a zoning ordinance rezoning property located at twelve seventy-six Hill Street, Radcliffe, Kentucky. Portion of P V A map number one thirty-eight forty zero one zero eight eight from residential four zone to residential six zone. The city of Radcliffe Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on a zone map amendment request on January fourth, twenty twenty-four, made by applicant Eddie El Cato. For property located at twelve seventy-six Hill Street, Radcliffe, Kentucky, consisting of one point two two acres and designated as a portion of Harden County P V A map I D. Number one thirty-eight forty zero one zero eight eight. See will book sixty, page four eighty-six, and will book seventy-three, page two ninety-five, Office of the Harden County Court Clerk. The request was for a zone map amendment from residential four zone to residential six zone. The planning commission recommended the zone map amendment request be granted as the request was supported by the evidence of record in the city's comprehensive plan, and the city council is now enacting an ordinance to change the property zoning. Please find the full ordinance on the website, W W W dot radcliffe dot O R G, or by contacting the city clerk at ashley dot Russo at radcliffe K Y dot G O V by email. That's a second reading, Mayor.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call vote, please.
Merle?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Deroch?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Mr. Pike, number four, second reading of an ordinance.
This is a summary of a zoning ordinance rezoning property located at twelve seventy-eight Hill Street in Radcliffe, Kentucky. Portion of P V A map one thirty-eight forty zero one zero thirty from residential holding zone to residential six zone. The city of Radcliffe Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on a zone map amendment request on January fourth, twenty twenty-four, made by applicant Eddie El Cato. For property located at twelve seventy-eight Hill Street, Radcliffe, Kentucky, consisting of one point three four acres and designated as a portion of Harden County P V A map I D. Number one thirty-eight forty zero one zero thirty. See will book sixty, page four eighty-six, and will book seventy-three, page two ninety-five, Office of the Harden County Court Clerk. The request was for a zone map amendment from a residential holding zone to residential six zone. The planning commission recommended the zone map amendment request be granted as the request was supported by the evidence of record in the city's comprehensive plan, and the city council is now enacting an ordinance to change the property zoning. Please find the full ordinance on the website, W W W dot radcliffe dot O R G, or by contacting the city clerk at ashley dot Russo at radcliffe K Y dot G O V by email. That's a second reading, Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Have any discussion? Hearing done, can we roll call vote, please?
Owens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Deroch?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number five, Mr. Pike.
This is a summary of a zoning ordinance rezoning property located at twelve seventy-eight Hill Street in Radcliffe, Kentucky. Portion of P V A map number one thirty-eight forty dash zero one dash zero thirty from residential holding zone to residential four zone. The city of Radcliffe Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on a zone map amendment request on January fourth, made by applicant Eddie El Cato. For property located at twelve seventy-eight Hill Street, Radcliffe, Kentucky, consisting of ten point zero three one acres and designated as a portion of Harden County P V A map I D. Number one thirty-eight forty zero one zero thirty. See will book sixty, page four eighty-six, and will book seventy-three, page two ninety-five, Office of the Harden County Court Clerk. The request was for a zone map amendment from residential holding zone to residential four zone. The planning commission recommended the zone map amendment request be granted as the request was supported by the evidence of record in the city's comprehensive plan, and the city council is now enacting an ordinance to change the property zoning. Please find the full ordinance on the website, W W W dot radcliffe dot O R G, or by contacting the city clerk at ashley dot Russo at radcliffe K Y dot G O V by email. That's a second reading, Mayor, ready for motion to adopt.
I make a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Deroch?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Pike, number six.
This is a summary of a zoning ordinance rezoning property located at thirty-nine forty-one South Wilson Road, Elizabeth Town, Kentucky. Portion of P V A number one eighty-two ten zero 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 one zero from residential three zone to residential four zone. The city of Radcliffe Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on a zone map amendment request on January fourth, twenty twenty-four, made by applicant Harden County Developers Incorporated. For property located at thirty-nine forty-one South Wilson Road, Elizabeth Town, Kentucky, consisting of forty-one point one acres and designated as a portion of Harden County P V A map I D. Number one eighty-two dash ten dash zero zero dash zero one zero. See deed book eleven eighty-five, page seven eighty-three, Office of the Harden County Court Clerk. The request was for a zone map amendment from residential three to residential four zone. The planning commission recommended the zone map amendment request be granted as the request was supported by the evidence of record and the city's comprehensive plan, and city council is now enacting an ordinance to change the property zoning. Please find the full ordinance on the website, W W W dot radcliffe dot O R G, or by contacting the city clerk at ashley dot Russo at radcliffe K Y dot G O V by email. That's a second reading, Mayor, ready for motion to adopt.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion the second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Deroch?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries. And then number seven, and this is just a reminder, this is what we discussed regarding the floodplain designated local administrator. Murray came at the work session. That's what we discussed, having the engineer, being able to do this. And so I just need an introduction for a first reading.
I'll introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
This is an ordinance amending chapter seven point five flood damage prevention of the code of ordinances of the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky. Whereas the city council of the city of Radcliffe, Kentucky has previously enacted an ordinance concerning flood damage prevention. And whereas the city council desires to amend said ordinance, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Radcliffe as follows. The chapter seven point five flood damage prevention of the code of ordinances of the city of Radcliffe is amended to read as follows. Article four administration seven point five dash twenty-one designation of local administrator. The city council hereby appoints the city engineer to administer, implement, and enforce the provisions of this chapter by granting or denying development permits in accordance with its provisions, and is herein referred to as the floodplain administrator. That is first reading, Mayor.
Mr. Pike, all right, come to the end of our meeting. I think Mr. Brown went first last time. I'll start with you, Mr. Thompson. You got anything on your end?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Miss Owens?
Nothing, sir.
No. Ms. Merle?
Uh, yes, today at the Radcliffe Small Business Alliance lunch meeting, we were able to, thanks to the generosity of so many, um, um, local participants and sponsors. We presented ten thousand dollars today to the E C T C Emergency Fund. Uh, that is for the help within our community at E C T C to buy supplies and housing and foods and anything they need to be able to continue to seek their education. Uh, and we also donated, um, a portion of our gala funds to the C and P Garage. They are a veteran owned volunteer organization located in Radcliffe to help veterans apply for benefits. So both of those received their gala, um, donations today. And this is a little bit early, um, but if you'll mark your calendar for April thirteenth, Saturday. If you're not gonna ride bikes with Ms. Barbara, you can come to the tenth annual Paws United Pet Expo. So I'm really excited, and it will be held in Radcliffe. We have a lot of new things, a lot of big things happening. Um, and we will have the Harden County Animal Shelter will be there with their low cost shot clinic. I think they said last year they, uh, saw about three hundred and seventy-eight pets that they gave shots and microchips to here in Radcliffe, which is on, for this end of the county, not necessarily just because they were Radcliffe. But, uh, there'll be more to follow, uh, more to come on that, but mark your calendar for April thirteenth.
Yeah, and I will say, I was there last year, and there was a lot of door prizes, and there wasn't enough people to bid on how many door prizes there was, so, um, if I had more money, I could have bid, if I had Kim Thompson's Corvette and money, I would. But no, there was a lot of, there was a lot of, so, yeah, there was a lot of door prizes, so. All right, thank you.
Do you get a lot of support from Fort Knox when, when you do that? Do they, they come out and participate also, or is it mostly Harden County?
Well, right now, we have probably fifteen or twenty different rescues, and they're coming from all over Louisville, all over other counties. Um, we've got probably about thirty vendors set up. Uh, we're having a dog rescue dog show this year, so that's new. There's a lot of demonstrations, a lot of new things this year. But it's, it's supported throughout the state, actually. It's gonna be at the old U S cab store, the A P R building on Centennial.
Okay, um, along the R S B A, we're gonna have a R S B A connect, which meets the fourth Thursday of every month. This month, it's gonna be at the Burger Bar, um, on February the twenty-second in Toshi. This Thursday, as in day after tomorrow, yes. It's coming up quick. What, is it five thirty? Five thirty? And it's about an hour, so it's a nice little get together, meet and greet people. So come join us.
Ms. Brown?
Nothing additional, Mayor.
No, Ashley? All right, all right, uh, next meeting, March eleventh, um, and then our regular council meeting next month is the nineteenth. Hopefully, we'll have some of those bids in. Um, and if not, we'll, we may have to have a special call meeting just to get that, uh, stuff done, but I'll let you know by then. Uh, all right, with that.
I do wanna say something. I, I was by Redmar Plaza today, today.
Yeah, today.
First, first time I've been by there in months, and it looks great. I mean, it's really, it's disappearing. I mean, it's like, yeah, I mean, it's just come down way faster than I thought it would.
I know, uh, Barbara and I, cause, um, it's funny how she knows when I'm there every time. It's like she has a camera. I think you said for the forty, how many years you said you've seen that building sit there, coming up and down that hill for the last?
Oh, let's see, seventy-nine is when I started dating Bobby.
So forty-five years? About forty-five years you've stared at that building, so it's just odd to see it gone, you know?
It, it is. I mean, it's, it's a massive piece of property, you know, you realize that after that structure's down.
And I hope other developers, if something doesn't work out.
And, and kudos to our, kudos to our employees for the work that they've done over there, because, you know, those guys don't get a lot of recognition, and so that was, that's fantastic.
They've done a great job, and so, yeah, it looks, but it'll, it'll all be cleaned up, and the only thing, the structure I have left is just the, um, um, old health department building, but that's nothing that's out of sorts right now, so, all right.
The daily change, so you can imagine what it was like. I mean, it's been a few months since I've been by there, and so it was like, wow.
Where'd it go?
What is coming down?
It's really gone. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, so moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all. Thank you, Murray.